I told him, you told me today, I was like, I'm going to tell them, all right, well.
Gotcha.
Very exciting.
All right, we are on the air. So it's our work session and the first item on our agenda is the 2023 Criminal Justice Commission Stop Data presented by our captain, Ryan Burdick.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So we got our results back for the stops report for 2023, the statistical transparency of policing. And essentially, several of our officers are going out, they're doing self-initiated contacts such as a traffic stop, pedestrian stop, we're recording the demographics. There's three parts to the test that stops runs, the veil of darkness, or basically a decision to stop analysis, essentially being that the race of the person in the daytime, the amount their stops should be roughly equivalent to the evening or when it's dark. The second part is the stop outcome analysis test, and then the third part is the search finding analysis part. So behind me, we do have our numbers that I pasted into the staff report. So for this end of year five, of the approximately 4,003 stops, it's broken down into roughly the different groups of everyone we contacted. And then below that is the traffic versus pedestrian count as well. And then the third box has essentially, that's that veil of darkness or decision to stop analysis. So if you're looking back there, that for the Asian Pacific Islander category, we didn't have a big enough sample, that's why there's no result there. And that's the same with the other two horizontal lines. For the Black and Latinx, 1.1 to 0.81. And essentially, what you're looking for is a one-to-one. So it's the same outcome daytime, same outcome nighttime. Essentially, if it's above two, that would be deemed a test fail for that category. So the, our data is good. The second and third test is, on the stop report, would be identified, I think it's like on page 31. And we had no disparities or concerning outcomes, and we passed both of those tests. So overall, the data is good, we'll always look at it. If there is an issue, we're going to try and look into see what's going on, what we can improve upon, or to account for any disparity in the numbers. So, that's kind of the quick version.
Can I go into a couple of pieces of this?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody understands what the veil of darkness actually measures and how that works. So basically, there are times of the year when it's dark, and there are times of the year when that same hour period is light. Usually, these are close to the end of workdays, or the beginning when people are driving to work. Our goal is that during both times of year, the numbers are the same, so that if you can see into the vehicle, it doesn't change the outcomes when you can't see into the vehicle for the same commute patterns. Our first year, we did have a finding on that. We worked really hard with the state and with our officers just to figure out what was causing that. We have not had a finding since. There's a certain amount of, if you have findings, the state will sit down and help you correct and figure out what's going on in your system, to make sure that you have corrective actions to change our outcomes. In this case, I don't believe there were any this year for any city. Is that correct?
There was one for Gresham.
Gresham had one. Okay, so it's not common for there to be findings, but this came out of Legislative Piece four or five years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of the questions we've gotten over the years is, okay, well, which officer? We will never know which officer. So all of these, they take the specific data to the individual out of the stop to make sure that we're looking at the department as a whole. This is not supposed to be punitive, it is supposed to change behavior. So we work really hard to make sure that we're talking to all of our officers about all of this content, and it sounds like it's working, which is really great.
Yeah.
Are there other questions about any of the other tests, or about any of the other data you saw in the staff report? Yeah. Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. You're not, okay.
Well, so the second test was outcome, like disproportionately ticketed versus arrested versus searched.
Or under technical search.
And then talk about the search outcome, the third test.
So the search finding analysis, it's the third one, and it would be the relative rate of successful searches. So essentially, is, if you're searching a particular group, what's that outcome relative to the other groups? Those numbers should be consistent, and then that would indicate that the reasoning behind it was fairly sound. If there's a disparity such, if there's one group that's being searched 10 times the rate of another group with the same outcome, then that would be a concern.
So our goal is whenever we do a search, we find the thing that we think is in the car. Nobody wants to find that thing, nobody wants to find a gun. But if we believe that there's a gun in the car, then we should have enough suspicion, there should be enough evidence that we're seeing in the situation that leads to there being that thing in the car. If we find it, it doesn't count against us, so it's only if we do a search and the search doesn't produce the things that we're, we said we were searching for. Does that make sense? Okay.
And does that include pat downs?
So it would include pedestrian pat downs, I would think. The pedestrian side of it, it's much smaller. I think we had something like 87 pedestrian stops of that 4,000. But I think that would be part of that, too.
I noticed that it said, I was curious about the pedestrian, and I was looking at some of that in the report, and it said that Beaverton and Eugene were the two highest, I don't know, Salem, Beaverton and Salem were the two highest percentages of pedestrian stops, and that that was new, that that had changed. Do you have any?
An interesting statistic in that, in the report, was the Portland Police Bureau, their number, I think, was 106.
For all of Portland?
All the Portland Police Bureau was 106, and our department was 87.
Wow.
So I think we're, I think we're being appropriate in our contacts, and we're out there proactively looking for things, too.
It also is that Portland just doesn't have enough officers right now to be able to provide service at the level that they'd like to. We can look into that. I don't think we have any sense for why, if there's programming happening in Salem or in Beaverton that led to that.
It was just a point of curiosity, I was, yeah.
Yeah, just to follow on, on the search issue, so are there two components to the search, and that, you know, are all the searches evaluated for success, and then is there a second analysis among demographics to see disparities?
So when, when you are making that stop report, if there's a contact, you're going to record the demographic, was a search conducted, yes, no? And then was something located, yes, no? And that's going to be that data piece that's going to build? And at the end of that, they do that different grouping to determine if there's?
Yeah, I understand that part, but is there just?
Is there just information about how successful our searches?
Yeah, the whole, all demographics.
I don't know, do you have that? For a year, do you guys ever pull the data of when you decide to search, how many times they're productive?
No, and on the stops report, the only agencies that were listed were agencies with a disparate outcome. So if you pass, that your data was not published.
But if you're curious, I mean, I think one of, when, it was a couple of years ago, when we were looking at how many stops where we actually did searches and ended up seizing information, or seizing tools out of the search. We had pretty good numbers at the time, we can get you a sense for what that looks like. One of the discussions I've had with Emma, I'm not doing this to Ryan, yet, is that we'd like to tell our story differently. You and I have talked about this around information that's interesting to the public and helpful for them in knowing how we're running as a department. Emma's a little busy right now, being the finance director, but when that is over this summer, we are planning on sitting down and starting to look through those datas and tell the story on a dashboard format on the, on the website differently. We'll add that to the list. I think it's an interesting question.
Well, yeah, I just, you know, would be interested to see, you know, how effective this, how effective the whole problem cause process is, you know, you know, as a whole. And just one other question is that the report listed, I don't know, I don't know, was it like 25 cities or something like that? When I would see those lists of cities, it was like, it seemed like it was 25 or 30. Was that just the largest?
Size, there's just many tiers.
Correct. Your tier one is your, your large agencies, we're a tier two agency.
But it's not the entire state?
Not the entire state is subjected to these measurements, because honestly, in some cases, the police department's so small that they're not producing enough numbers to be able to get any of the demographic data out of it. It has to be statistically significant enough, and it has to be at a high enough number that you even can pull out people of color or, or some sort of demographic information.
They're not even meeting the law of large numbers. Okay, thanks.
I have two questions. The race and ethnicity data, is that self-disclosed? Like, does it come from their driver's license?
No, no, it's the officers, it's their perceived race at the time of contact.
Why is that?
State law.
Yeah.
So it has to be subjective?
Otherwise, so some people don't disclose on, on their license? Or I don't even know if they would disclose on their license in the first place.
I just looked at mine.
Does it disclose?
There is a, there's a C in the upper right.
There you go.
So I, I, I don't know if I, you know, if you could opt out when you go through the DMV or not, I don't know if it's blank in some cases, but I was just curious, and so I looked at mine.
So it has been under, when we talked, I think we had the state come out a couple of years ago, and their discussion was, the officer has to put something in whether or not the person does have a license. So that's as far as it went. We can have a discussion about how other cities are collecting that data, but I think it was state law that required us to at least note something, whether or not it was on their license.
I think it's just, it's interesting because, you know, then you're dealing with just perception, you're dealing with a very subjective assessment, while the officer is feasibly looking at a lot of different things and trying to assess, but we actually should have, you know, more definitive data on the licenses, so it seems like we would, we would default to something that's more self-disclosed.
We can talk to the state and to the officers.
I think it might be, you know, seeing if this is a conversation that comes up with maybe other jurisdictions.
Check their license now.
Oh, that's, that class C is the type of license.
That's my driver's license class, okay.
Yeah, that's not your, I don't see.
There's not a race or ethnicity?
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, mine's pretty old, but no. Mine's from 2018.
There should be.
I don't know, I feel like.
There should be a discussion.
Yeah. I mean, okay, so let's say that, you know, one of us gets stopped, and the officer assumes that we are a different race or ethnicity, or in some of the populations that are very, very underrepresented in our communities, you know, are you making, what assumptions is the officer making, and how subjective are those when they're putting someone in a category of Middle Eastern or native?
They're making that determination.
And what sort of supports or training are we providing for our officers to, you know, be able to either ask, or, you know, what are they, I don't know, it just seems like it's.
It's an interesting question. It is subjective, but I will also say that this study is about subjective.
About?
About how people are perceiving. So actually, in a weird way, that how the officer perceives someone is actually the thing that we're measuring, whether or not it's correct or not correct. Now, when we start looking at the demographics of our community, that shifts. So I think, I think we're both saying things that are valid in this, it's worth having a conversation with the state. But we have brought up the fact that it was subjective, and we received comment back from the state saying.
Yeah, it is.
So I don't know what the better way is, and I do, I also don't want to offend people, or have our officers offend people in this space either, so.
It's an interesting question.
Yeah.
Well, my other question, maybe interesting or not, but I'm wondering about the, the agency level information and how that's disaggregated when we do multi-agency operations.
Like for our traffic stop?
Yeah, you know, so like, there was, you know, let's say that there was something, we called in resources from all these different, you know, places to help with it, does that all go into our stop, stop data?
So, that's a good question. We just did a traffic mission, and I think we had something like 15 motor officers in town, so they're doing their stops data entries, but, and they do provide location on that, too. So I don't know offhand, though, does that, does that data point default to our area, or does it go back to the host agency? And that would be something I'd have to clarify.
Okay.
And we do write a lot of tickets on that day, so yeah, probably.
Thank you for that.
It's a good question. Are there other questions on this? So we do, we share this, we'll share this information with Equity Steering Committee. This has been a big part of their work over the years, and it was a part of the early relationship building between the department and our Equity Steering Committee, so.
I'm guessing this is, the state puts this out publicly on the website or something. Do we link to it, or do we somehow put it up on our website?
So on the staff report, I did link the 2023 report to it.
Okay.
I brought a thumb drive with it on, I can give to Scott, too, so.
I just meant about making it, I mean, it's obviously publicly available because it's in our staff report, but I mean, we actually, like, have them year to year on the website.
We did in the early years, I know that, because it was on our equity page for the police department. So we actually had a separate page talking about our equity work, but we can go back and see if we can upload it there.
Yeah. Good to make them easy to find.
That work. I look at Emma because I, I don't know why. She's not actually in charge of this, but I'm just looking. Okay. Is there anything else that non-stops? Ryan, you made it. Good job. You're so efficient. Do your ways.
Ryan was very astute. He gave us one flat.
I didn't have any. Does that make me amazing?
Oh, that's, that's very, very astute.
Have a good night. You do have so many slides.
Our next item is the city manager talking about the houseless support services update, which was her packet memo.
A couple of things. First, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows, if anyone is watching on air, we, this is the only other item tonight for the work session. We'll be ending early. And we do have a meeting in executive after this. So I came before the council back in January to talk about some, some houseless work that we were applying to do through the 23-hour stabilization center, but also a cooling center that we were going to apply for over at the library. We then, as we got closer and closer to the deadline for the city grants to the county, I started getting a lot more requests. And so, that's awesome. So I wanted to be, we didn't have a council meeting. There wasn't a way for me to come talk to you all about this. It's not a council goal, and so I don't have a prioritized list of items that you all want us working on. But generally, there's been a lot of support for us addressing these concerns in our community. So I felt like generally I had support, but I wanted to double check it, make sure you all don't have any concerns with the applications we put in. So I'm going to go over those five applications, and then just give you an update on the process and take any feedback that you all may have. So the first one, and I did put these in priority order, in hopes that the things that are currently the highest need to the city are funded first. It doesn't mean they're the highest need for everyone. They're just that it was a city grant, so we prioritize the city needs first. The next needs were around things that we've funded in the past or talked a lot about. And then the last one was a request that I received from Providence. So we're going to go through those. First and foremost, we do have the cooling center. As a reminder, that's a $30,000 request that we made to fund things like tools associated with individuals coming in and using our site after hours during the height of the summer or during air quality events. Those are probably going to be hours between 6:00 PM most weekends and 10:00 PM, or 8:00 PM on the few days that we're open until 8:00 till 10:00 PM. It'll cover things like the cost of staff and a behavioral health person, if we need to cover the cost of a behavioral health person being on site, as well as things like charging towers. There's a, there's a, when you bring a whole bunch of people into a tight amount of space and they don't have air conditioning or other things, they may need just to charge their items while they're present. So things like that. And then tools for them to leave the building with cooling rags for people who are overheating. In some cases, we may actually have some units if their, their apartment or something needs a unit that we could actually provide for them. We'll have some units that we can help people load into their homes. Our goal is just to get as many people the kinds of services that they need while they're in crisis. First priority on those dollars are the staffing needs. Second will be these other tools, and we'll buy them as we can. So that's $30,000 ask. I think it's likely we're going to get the funding for that. The second request is, a couple of years ago, you all approved the hiring of a behavioral health specialist or the creation of that job. It's been incredibly successful. When we negotiated for additional supports to Milwaukee with Vaheed Brown, there was a discussion about the county providing services to Central City Concern for additional resources, FTE resources. And then the city was going to fully fund the behavioral health position. We did that. What we found is that Central City Concern is using that FTE, but it's just not spending much time in Milwaukee. They've had some hiring issues, and there's just so much demand on their services right now. They just can't spend enough time in Milwaukee, which I get. We're not asking that they remove those funds. We think that's really important to the service of the region. But the city would like them instead for the county to help offset the behavioral health position. So we made the ask. We'll see if it's funded or not. But it has been really successful, and we're facing a general fund shortfall. So this would be a way for us to offset a cost of.
So the ask is for them to offset the cost of Glenn?
50% of Glenn.
Not to give us somebody else on housing?
So it's 50% of Glenn, knowing that the opioid fund settlement money is funding 40% of Glenn's time. And then 10%, really, we need to keep flexible so that he can do whatever he needs to, just in general service to the city. Let's see, they are funding these physicians in other cities. I believe they're funding them in Cambie. They gave money to Malala. They've given money to Gladstone, I believe, and to Oregon City. So this is, we're not the only community having this discussion, and that's why I felt okay going back and asking for cash. The third ask was, for those of you who weren't here during the pandemic, we did a rent assistance and a utility assistance fund that the city funded. We did that out of our CET funds, I believe, the first time. We also then used utility funds for offsetting the utility bills. Those programs have been hugely successful and helped people stay in homes. Northwest Housing Alternatives ran the housing program, and St. Vincent de Paul ran the utility program for us. As those funds were depleted, we ended up partnering with Clackamas County. They gave us more resources to offset our utility bills. And we've just found that the demand has not gone away since the pandemic. In partnership with Clackamas Service Center, there's an application to help fund a staff person. And I want to just thank Councilor Stavner for bringing sort of this part of the conversation forward. It would be an FTE, but also rent assistance and utility assistance dollars for families in Milwaukee. Historically, this organization has been providing food boxes to families here. So they provided 335 food boxes on a, on a regular basis to families in Milwaukee. They know our families. And they have, they believe that they have the skills and the tools to be able to create a program that could run this. Since Northwest Housing Alternatives was amazing during the pandemic, but they were really clear they don't actually have the capacity to do these programs ongoing. And part of what I think Adam Brown's goal has been is to increase capacity just for these types of services in Clackamas County. This would be a chance for them to work with a new partner to see if this is a new way of getting cash out to families.
So they haven't worked with Clackamas Service Center before?
Not on this. There was a program, and you can correct me, they're used to, Clackamas Service Center used to do different things. They sort of melted down for a bit, and they reconstituted their programming. They have a new, Jill is their new executive leader. She seems great. But she has not managed a program like this before.
But they do have a mechanism to provide short-term rent assistance. And they work through the county's CHAW program, the Community Housing Assistance Line. And so they process the applications there. But then the, the actual funds are dispersed through the service center.
What she said. Jill's been really great, and I really have appreciated her coming to the table. She's excited about a partnership on this and getting to know the city better. For those who don't know, they're right outside of our boundaries. So they're up by the Fred Meyer on 82nd, and they have a new expansion area. But this is their community, and they want to make sure that they're providing services here.
And they currently serve about 350 Milwaukee residents through their programming. So these, these services would be specific to residents within our jurisdiction. And this would be something that I think helps people stay in their homes and helps sort of curb the increase in cost of living that we're seeing across the region.
What's the typical wait time in return auditions from when the, when the applications?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head. And I also don't know, you know, sometimes there, when there was a lot of money going out, there was more of a wait time. I don't know what it would look like now, because there's not an effort to get, you know, millions of dollars of federal funding out the door. So that's something that we could ask. Yeah.
But I think the really cool thing, if this is funded, is we can actually start tracking how many people in Milwaukee are actually needing these services and how that process is working. It's really hard right now for us to, we can check the utility bills. We've been receiving those requests. Joyce has been rolling those into different service areas. But rent assistance, we had a very specific focus when we did this during COVID, which was for people who weren't covered through other programs. So I don't know how many people actually needed service, found it elsewhere after we said no. So I think it'll just give us a better picture of what's really happening in town.
And is it, I see two-year pilot program. So if it's successful, which I'm assuming it will be, is there plans to have a permanent program specific to Milwaukans?
I don't know. Part of my hope is that right now, there's all this new SHS money. Well, yes, there's a hope. But there's all these new SHS dollars. And I think Adam's trying to learn what actually works for community members. So he's testing, this is a test bed for a whole bunch of programs. So I think if it works, and it's, it works better than other programs that are tested in other communities, then yeah, it could continue. If it doesn't, then I think we'd probably tweak it and try and find a different way to get the money out.
Next question.
Yeah, I'm pleasantly surprised to hear that the Clackamas Service Center has disaggregated different areas and can tell you who they serve in Milwaukee. Because I've been involved with them off and on for several years, and I've never seen anything like that, where they actually distinguish communities or whatever. So.
Well, we made sure she had her map. And we said, this is your service area, so you gotta know. And he said, one of the problems is that, that we ran into, it's not a problem per se, but when we were doing the money through Northwest Housing Alternatives, they made assumptions about where our boundaries were, and they were wrong. And a lot of our naturally occurring affordable housing is outside of the city boundaries. And so it's also just making sure that we start to get a sense for what actually is happening inside city boundaries and in the UGMA. But we need a differentiation between the two.
Absolutely.
Okay, number four is that we have the 23-hour stabilization center coming in. It is going to take a while. So every time we talk to them, the three of us met with the stabilization center folks last week. Is that right? Maybe two weeks ago?
Three weeks ago.
31st. There you go. The meeting was really helpful. It was with Adam Brown, Vaheed Brown, Jana, Jana over at the sheriff's office, Malcolm at the sheriff's office. It was a great meeting, just starting the discussion about when we can start expecting things like the application to come before the planning team, and when they think they'll have their construction. I'll tell you right now, I don't think the building's going to be ready for you all to have your dinner there this year. They're, they're hoping to have the contractor, I think, on board by that point. But it's a year's, a year of construction. It's going to be in demolition phase. So that part's probably out. But this position was to try and help people who are leaving the center, the 23-hour stabilization center, with casework and case management, just knowing people coming out are often in crisis. And one of our bigger concerns is that people would just get dropped out, and then you've lost them again. And our hope is we stabilize people, we get them into ongoing services or that they leave stable, one or the other. Yeah.
So that goes to, because it didn't say what the 150 is for, not for a person?
Yeah, it's for a person.
Do that, right?
Yeah, and there were other pieces. I can, it's in the description that I also attached to this. So there's more data or detail in there.
These charge planner, in a way.
Basically. Whether or not they're at the stabilization center, or whether or not they're out at CSC or somewhere else is pretty open. But the discussion I'm having with Adam is if the, if the 23-hour stabilization center isn't opening for 15 months, I just wasn't sure if this one was as ripe, just because the building may not be ready, and we may not be seeing the patients. So I will have that discussion. We want it funded. I'm great with him funding himself, right? Just make sure that this, this service is provided. And it may be helpful for him to have an outside location from the 23-hour stabilization for the service.
And I think that this, this particular piece of the application shows that we are thinking about what we want to see as a post-release plan for folks. I mean, the services are available to everyone in the county. And so we know that in many cases, they'll have a ride there. But we don't know what happens when they've reached that stabilization level or if, you know, a stressor, like, how do I get back to my community? Or where do I go now? Or, you know, any of those questions could be something that puts somebody right over the top again. So this is something that I think I wanted to put forth as, as a value statement, that in our work around stabilization and really a trauma-informed perspective, we need to make sure that this is, you know, as, as, that we're investing on the front end and on the back end of someone's experience.
And this was a part of the Good Neighbor Agreement that we sent over to the county for their review. We have not heard back on that review. They said that they would have it in the next six weeks. So I'm in charge of setting up the next meeting to talk about that further. Okay, the final request is about Providence, Milwaukee. I met with the leadership of Prov, Milwaukee, two weeks ago, after the incident in which an individual lost their life because of their, their.
Negligence.
I, I can't say that, because they're still in court, right? But because of a situation that arose at Prov, Milwaukee on December 13th. The conversation was great. We talked about two different options. One is that there could be a psych unit actually operating at the ER. So having an individual actually working in the ER and making sure that as people are going to be leaving, they're actually prepared and correctly being discharged. They are doing a pilot program like that at St. Vincent's. So there is a place where Providence is trying this out. It sounds like there's been success. When I, so originally, that was the, the request, was going to be that we help them fund a position like that between 8:00 AM and 1:00 AM, seven days a week. When I heard back from the head of behavioral health, she felt like those are things that she can actually bill to. There's a billing code that allows for her to collect if she has that position in the ER. And so there's a way for them to self-fund that, at least possibly. So she is still looking at it. We're going to meet with her and talk about that further. But they did not submit that request. They then have what's called the BOB program, but it's Building Bridges? I can't remember the acronym.
Who's it?
Building Out Comes Through Bridges?
Yeah, something like that.
So we have, we've been sharing positions with Willamette Falls for that program, and they're not based out of our building any longer. What they ended up submitting was having one position there permanently at this building, which would be really helpful. And so we did put it in, but because it wasn't that ER position that we had talked about as a priority, I left it in the number five slot. So those are the things that we ended up proposing. Are there questions or concerns with anything that we put in?
I only, I only had a concern that I brought up earlier when we talked this morning, just with the Providence, Milwaukee, just because of the, I mean, that wasn't an isolated incident that happened before, as we're now hearing from investigations, that they've been letting people out when they're not clearly in condition to do so. So I'm a little hesitant with handing them over more money. I know staffing is important, but I'd like to, at least before we do that, hear something from them. You know, like, what, what are they going to do to change their policy, or what are they going to do to prevent that from happening again, before we just hand that over?
Absolutely. So, and I can talk through what some of those steps were. So there's a few things that we learned in the conversation with the hospital that I really appreciated and valued. First is that there is terminology that's used inside a hospital that heightens weather, triggers responses from doctors and nurses, that force them to step back into a questioning place from an assertion place. So they have retrained on that verbiage. And they're actually, they've provided the one-pagers to our officers, so that our officers actually can use the same verbiage when they come into a situation in the future where they see a situation, they believe that the wrong assessment has been made. They now have the tools to be able to assert why and what that looks like, and to force the two. the team back into the position of questioning and away from the position of asserting, which to me was a big deal and I really appreciated them sharing that training. The second piece is sometimes when you're in the situation, the people who have already made a decision get entrenched and it's hard to get them to remove that entrenchment on their decision. So we now have a process by which we can call into leadership of the hospital even in the middle of the night so that we can ask them to reevaluate the, the decision for the discharge. The first step is for the manager on site to make a reevaluation. If we still disagree with that decision, it actually bumps up to the administrator on, on duty. The administrator means the hospital administrator. There's several hospitals in the region. They each take a night where they are on duty and they get a phone call if there's an assertion that something's going wrong in the hospital and they make the decision for whichever hospital is calling in. So those, those steps at least make me feel like the team is a part of that team and that they're including us now in how we can make it safer and better for our community. I will also, I just want to call out the, the CEO of the hospital, Brad, is going to be doing a ride along with one of our officers and is going to a sergeant shift change to work on relationship building and to talk about how we can, we can work better together in the future, which I thought was really lovely. And then they've offered a standing meeting. We're going to meet with them again. And I think now that we're stepping away from this being just about an acute situation, I think there's a point where we actually just start doing, we should do this. We should have a joint meeting and bring people together. So I, I do know that the BOB program helps connect people to services. I think it is a worthy program for us to help fund and it was a good faith effort to show them that we're in for solving these problems, not just asking them to be different. We're asking for both, but I think it was our way of saying, we see that it's really hard. You know, the, the burnout rate in officers is very similar to what happened with ER doctors over the course of the pandemic. Both need support and if we want different outcomes, then everybody just needs the, they need support. So that's what we're trying to do.
I appreciate that information.
That work?
Yeah.
Are there other questions?
I guess on the behavioral health specialist, we started from the position of we'll hire one and you'll hire one and now we're just talking about help us fund the one we hired. So do you not feel that we need more?
I think that we always could use more. That's, the BOB program actually is another resource. We had a conversation with Providence about them sending an individual to our Tuesday events that we're holding at the library. Each program has a different network of tools and so bringing together a bunch of programs to allow for that network to bring as many resources into the system as possible is really what our goal is. Central city concern is great and if they can keep sending Sherry, we want that. I just can't depend on her as much. I mean, ideally I'd love for the county to, to submit multiple FTE and for us to have much bigger program. But at minimum, I wanted to make sure if we, if we went into negotiations at a 50/50 split, that the city was at minimum getting the 50/50 split that we discussed.
And I guess I took something from your memo and maybe I'm, you know, maybe it was, maybe it was not intentional, maybe it was something I read into it, but that Glenn's position was not really, I mean, it's behavioral health position, it's not a housing position. And so that he's spending more time on housing people than on the behavioral health aspect that he.
We knew that people in crisis were both often and so this really was, Glenn, there are times that Glenn is not talking about housing. He is entirely focused on an individual in mental health crisis in a home. That absolutely happens and I need for him to have that capacity. It's, drugs are often tied to it. It's not the only thing, but it is usually a component of what's going on. And then 10% of the calls, yeah, they're, they're just people in a, born into a schizophrenic state or right a situation that is just unmanageable without any other indicators. But a lot of people in our community have, the social safety nets have not caught them. So as they're going through these crises, they are also dealing with housing as a, as an issue. And so I asked him if he felt like 50% of his calls or whatever percentage of his calls really were both. And he felt that 50% of his calls right now are both.
Shows you how tied together those things are.
The whole system. You know, we, we went through the jail last year and it was, it was hard to see that our system just has not caught up with and has never provided the social safety net that people need. And so the backstops catch them and we're trying to have a better, a better stop before it hits a backstop.
Yeah.
Generally, everybody's okay with the five proposals. I'm meeting next with Adam Brown, so it sounds like he'll be in touch in the next couple of weeks and we'll talk about the actual proposals. And then in six weeks, so five weeks from now, we will have a meeting to do the next steps on the good neighbor agreement. Our team is working with their engagement team to come up with an engagement strategy. We'll discuss whatever's developed in that meeting in five weeks. But I felt like the conversation on the 31st was helpful and I feel like we're going in a good direction on that front.
Yeah, I thought it was very valuable because I mean, up until now, you know, I think that my impression was the county was focused on a building and building certainly is a big issue, but I just think that we have to work the, the, the parallel support mechanisms so that we don't end up with a building and nothing to do with it.
Yeah.
And so I, I, I think that was valuable because I think, I, you know, I think they know that, that we're interested in all of those things.
I do too and I, I, correct me if you had a different interpretation. I think that the county is getting used to going into spaces where cities don't really want them to come in. So there's some fear and it was a good dialogue to explain that we have a council that's largely supportive of trying to find ways to create these safety nets and that's why we're here. We're not, we're on the team. We're not here to defeat the team. And I think over the course of that hour, there was a belief that that was true. So that was helpful. Okay. Anything else?
Can I just thank you for, I mean, she did a lot of work on these city-led houseless initiatives.
Yeah.
So I just think, just want to say thank you for that and I think all two people watching should at least know that. She's probably my wife and your husband's face.
Extend that over my shoulders.
There you go.
The beautiful graphics that made it all feel like so polished and amazing, wasn't it? And she really made the, our words shine. So I deeply appreciate your help in making it happen. We were down to the wire, so. Perfect. Thank you all. Now you have.
All right. Well, that concludes our work session. Now we will meet in, after the work session, council will meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statutes 192.6602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.
Dinner. I was like, I'm going home.
Do you need a frozen meal today?
No, no, no.
I've got extras.
Depends on.
All right. So we're moving over there.
Yeah, and we've got 10 minutes because we have them calling in.